Call to order. The Village of Riverside Board of Trustees Regular Meeting of Thursday, June 6th, 2024. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Soul, would you please call the roll?
President Pollock.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Koss.
Here.
Trustee Gallegos.
Here.
Trustee Marshazga.
Here.
Trustee Clarity.
Here.
Manager Francis.
Here.
Attorney Filippini.
Present.
Also present Clerk Soul.
We have a quorum. President's Report. This is a special evening for the Village of Riverside. It is an evening where we welcome residents, volunteer residents, to join us in the work of the Village. I have to say that this process, this is my first time going through this appointment search process, and it's been very rewarding. We have a very talented group of individuals we're appointing, and throughout the Village we have a lot of talented people who are willing to give their time and volunteer to support the Village and do the good work that is necessary for good Village government. So I have the honor of nominating the following individuals to be appointed as members of their respective board or commission for the following terms. Peter Bootsakakis, the Economic Development Commission, term to expire 2027. Perry Montgomery, Economic Development Commission, term to expire 2027. Emilio Padilla, Preservation Commission, term to expire 2027. Amy Wasaki, Preservation Commission, term to expire 2027. Jacob Polka, Riverside TV Commission, term to expire 2027. Veronica Lil, Parks and Recreation Board, term to expire 2029. Elizabeth Vestine, Parks and Recreation Board, term to expire 2029. And Kelly Clarkson, Planning and Zoning Commission, term to expire 2029. I will, if, before I ask for a motion, a roll call, I did want to say that each of our committees and commissions has a staff liaison. Those staff liaisons will be reaching out to these individuals to bring them in, to do onboarding orientation, and bring them up to speed as they begin their terms on our commissions and committees. And I also, of course, want to thank all these people for volunteering. Could I have a motion in a second to approve these appointments?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Gallegos, second by trustee Koss. Clerk Soul, please call the roll.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Koss.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thank you. Now, at this point, Clerk Soul will affirm each of the appointees in their role. I should mention, too, that two of our appointees, Emilio Padilla and Veronica Lil, were unable to be here tonight, but their staff liaisons will reach out to them and schedule a time for them to come into the office to be affirmed and also for their orientation. Clerk Soul.
I, Peter Bootsakakis.
I, Peter Bootsikakis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of Economic Development Commissioner.
And I'll faithfully perform the duties of Economic Development Commissioner.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations. (applause). Perry.
I, Perry Montgomery.
I, Perry Montgomery.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of Economic Development Commissioner.
And will faithfully perform the duties of Economic Commission, Economic Development Commissioner.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
(applause). Elizabeth.
Yes.
I, Elizabeth Vestine.
I, Elizabeth Vestine.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of Parks and Rec Board Member.
And I will faithfully, okay, that's a long one. I will faithfully.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of Parks and Rec Board.
Of Parks and Rec Board Commission.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. (applause). Kelly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Kelly Clarkson.
Hi, Kelly Clarkson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of Parks and Rec Board Member.
And I will faithfully, okay, that's a long one. I will faithfully.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of Parks and Rec Board.
Of Parks and Rec Board Commission.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
(applause). Kelly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Kelly Clarkson.
Hi, Kelly Clarkson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of Planning and Zoning Commissioner.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of Planning and Zoning Commissioner.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
(applause).
Jacob.
Thank you.
Jacob Polka.
I, Jacob Polka.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully perform the duties, oh, sorry, I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of Riverside TV Commissioner.
And I will faithfully support the duties of the Riverside TV Commissioner.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
(applause).
Jacob.
Thank you.
Jacob Polka.
I, Jacob Polka.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully perform the duties, oh, sorry, I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of Riverside TV Commissioner.
And I will faithfully support the duties of the Riverside TV Commissioner.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
(applause). Congratulations to all of our new commissioners and board members on their appointment, and
more importantly, thank you for dedicating your service to the Village of Riverside and your community. Thank you very much. Moving on with the President's Report. We had a successful opening of the farmer's market yesterday. It's the fifteenth consecutive year for the farmer's market, as run by volunteers and people like these people we just appointed, who give of their time and effort to support the Village. Please join us each week, every Wednesday, 2:30 to 7:00 p.m., under the Riverside Water Tower, 10 Pine Avenue, for the freshest seasonal produce and other specialty goods, and I can promise you by the end of the season, the cicadas will be gone.[526.12][526.12](laughing). Upcoming meetings at Riverside Township Hall. June 10th, Economic Development Commission, Room 4. June 10th, Sesquicentennial Planning Committee, Room 22. June 11th, Landscape Advisory Commission, Room 22. June 13th, Preservation Commission, Room 4. And June 17th, Parks and Recreation Board will meet at Riverside Public Library, 1 Burling Road. Upcoming events in the Village include this weekend, June 8th and 9th, Riverside Arts Weekend, Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and is being held in Centennial Park next to the Water Tower at 10 Pine Avenue. It's a great event that we've had for a number of years. Please, please attend as you are able. June 14th, Concert in the Park, featuring Chicago's Piano Man at Big Ballpark, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. June 21st, Movie in the Park at Big Ballpark, from 8:30 to 10:30 p.m. That concludes the President's Report. Manager's Report.
Thank you. I have a couple of items to report on this evening. First, I wanted to give the board a quick update on disc golf. Director Mel Giotti has met with the contractor to confirm the various locations for the baskets. In addition to that, that same contractor will also be installing the Parks and Playground signage that we've been working on. He will be coordinating and supervising both projects. And the locations of where the final baskets are was the culmination of committee feedback, resident feedback. The installation will begin next week, and then initially where the tee-off boxes will be will be utilizing paint till they finalize where the bricks will be installed and finalized, and that will be the committee just doing one final walkthrough before they're installed, and then they will be ready to go. But, once the baskets are installed, residents are welcome to begin utilizing it because they'll have the painted tee boxes on the grass, obviously, once it gets mowed. We'll have to go out and mark it again, and so we're working to get those final pieces done, so we don't have to be painting every week, each time the grass is cut. We're really excited about that. Additionally, Parks and Recreation had a unique opportunity to collaborate with one of our community partners, the library. The Parks and Recreation Department has purchased disc golf and pickleball sets, and they will be available at the library to be checked out beginning next Friday, June 14th, and it will be at no charge. So if a resident wants to try disc golf or pickleball without investing in any type of equipment, it's a great opportunity. The library is open on Monday through Thursday from 9:00 to 8:00, Friday from 9:00 to 3:00, and on Saturdays, 9:00 to 3:00. And finally, the Parks and Recreation Community Survey has been mailed out and emailed to residents this week, and they will begin collecting information on the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Please take the time to fill out the survey, as it will inform future decisions for the department. Additionally, there is a social pinpoint website that we will be rolling out tomorrow through via eFlash. We did have some unveiling, a soft open, if you will, of the site, and we've already received some significant feedback, and it's great. It's an interactive map. It has budget priorities. It has an idea board. In addition to that, we will also have representatives from Berry Dunn at different special events soliciting feedback. The great part about this is kiddos will be able to engage in this process, and they'll be collecting data based on both adult feedback and the feedback of the kiddos. And so I think it'll be unique data points that we'll be able to compare and contrast against. So we're asking residents, we have a great group of residents that are very much engaged, so please help us to get feedback on the future of the Parks and Recreation program. That is all I have this evening.
Thank you, Manager Francis. Resident comments on non-agenda items now. If there are any public comments on non-agenda items, comments for items on the agenda may be made when that item is brought up, and visitors are recognized by the Village President. But at this time, if any resident or anyone in attendance would like to comment on a non-agenda items, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Before Clerk Soul reads the consent agenda, there is one item I would like removed, and that is item I, Resolution Authorizing the Manager to Execute a Contract for the, for the purpose of providing designer-led design-build services for the reconstruction of Berkeley Road Alley and the Village's annual sidewalk replacement program. That is related to another item on the agenda, so I would like to have that held off until later in the agenda, after we talk about the other item. So Clerk Soul, please call the roll. Call the consent agenda.
Resolution of the Village of Riverside, Illinois, waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the Village Manager to issue a purchase order to Freedom Chevrolet of Dallas, Texas, for the purchase of three 2024 Chevrolet Tahoe four-by-four utility vehicles for an amount not to exceed $172,000. Resolution of the Village of Riverside, Illinois, waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the Village Manager to issue a purchase order to MPC Communications and Lighting of Northbrook, Illinois, for the purchase of emergency equipment and upfitting for an amount not to exceed $60,000. Approved voucher list of bills, June 6th, 2024. Approved Village Board of Trustees Regular Meeting Minutes, May 16th, 2024. Approved Village Board of Trustees Executive Session Meeting Minutes, May 16th, 2024. Review and File Board and Commission Minutes. Board of Police and Fire Commissioners Regular Meeting, November 30th, 2023. Ad Hoc Sesquicentennial Planning Committee Regular Meeting, April 8th, 2024. Landscape Advisory Commission Regular Meeting, April 9th, 2024. Historical Commission Regular Meeting, April 15th, 2024. Parks and Recreation Board Regular Meeting, April 22nd, 2024. Resolution Authorizing the Sale or Disposal of Personal Property Owned by the Village of Riverside. Resolution Authorizing the Village Manager to Execute a Contract With and Issue a Purchase Order to MYS Incorporated for a not-to-exceed amount of $671,112.35 for the commuter lot number eight green parking lot reconstruction project. Motion to Approve an Intergovernmental Agreement Regarding Improvements to the Blythe Park Tennis Courts Between Riverside School District 96 and the Village of Riverside.
Do any of these items need to be removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion and a second.
Motion made.
Second.
Motion by trustee Gallegos, second by trustee Koss. Clerk Soul, please call the roll.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Koss.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Pending business. Presentation by Williams Architects regarding Public Safety, Space Needs, and Community Spaces. Manager Francis.
Thank you. So as the Board recalls, they had requested that the Village staff engage William Architects to update our facility needs assessment, and so this evening, we have representatives from Williams Architects, Mark Bushhouse and Andy Dogen in attendance, that will provide an overview of their findings of the review of the facilities and advise the Board of the next steps.
Thank you. Glad to be back here again and talking about your facilities. Mark Bushhouse, again, Williams Architects. Saw a few slides here to update the Board on the work that's been done. We met with staff and Mayor a couple good, actually several times, so we've been working diligently and ready to go here. So where are we in the process? Well, current step here is, we need to update your space programming. We've already looked at it now, at some decisions and things that have happened in your Town Hall here, your Village Hall. That's been done, and then with that, we needed to go back and review the space needs for fire and police, as well as evaluate and look at some opportunities and possibilities for some community spaces. This isn't the right slide.[1154.01][1154.01](laughing) I'm realizing, can we back up? I've read this slide. I know this slide, it's just, it's early.
That was the first one.
Really? Okay. All right. So, stay back to that other slide. So really, you know, the process that we're in here is do that space programming evaluations, come back and talk about that with you today, based on your input and discussions with us this evening. That will give us the information. We need to take next steps with staff and look at some conceptual planning concepts on the site to see where these improvements could happen, how they could happen. Are they all new? Are there things that have to be removed? Can we add on? All those things will be evaluated. So, those are our next steps. So right now, we just really want to go through this, but I think one of the things that we talked about in the meetings with staff, and I want to be sure, I say to the Board as well, you have such a well-integrated public safety department, the likes of which I really have not seen very often in my career, and they have really worked hard with us on this programming exercise to share spaces to the absolute maximum they can. I think they have been very creative about how they can work together and share the same locker rooms, same meeting spaces, a lot of the same working spaces. So your police and fire folks are very well-integrated together, and the space program reflects that, which has allowed them to have the spaces they need, and has allowed us to show you, you know, probably one of the tighter space program, we're building sizes to accomplish these goals very, very well. So we're feeling good about the rooms and the spaces and the sharing that has happened here. So, that's all been very well. So I know we're going to talk about community spaces. Is this where Andy will come and get into more of the specifics of it, but just a reminder here, this is your facility from, I guess, a drone over your river, looking from the back, and it kind of really helps everyone understand the original youth center, the old maintenance garage, the other storage and service garages that are all along the river, all in various stages of either somewhat decent condition to very, very poor condition. And then also helps us all understand the original township hall from 1894, and where the Village Hall is, that we are also in that. And then to the right of that, the police and fire department additions that were done in 1955 and then in 2000. So again, those pieces, while they were designed to match the original building fairly well, again, they're not part of the historical, original facilities as we investigated and we all agreed on last time. So with that, I'll let Andy, my partner here, talk through some of the specifics of the programming.
Thank you, Mark, and good evening, everybody. Again, my name is Andy Dogen, one of the managing partners at Williams and our municipal and recreation practices, and a pleasure to be with you tonight to talk a little bit more about this. So Mark did a great job of teeing up this process, and as he mentioned, we've had several meetings with the Village Manager, Village President, Chief Buckley, and Clerk Soul to talk, talk about these spaces and revisit how we can really drive efficiencies in public safety, how we can accomplish shared space, and then also to evaluate what community-focused and oriented spaces could potentially be part of this. So I believe in your packets you all received, which is kind of the meat and potatoes of our analysis, which is the room-by-room, space-by-space, building-space program. Our process is to go through each of these spaces, have good discussions about what each of these spaces means, what these sizes mean, what can potentially be shared, and what we're doing in our presentation tonight is to just summarize this for you, and happy to answer any questions about specifics. So, just to hit on the high points, for police and fire, we want to show what you have now and what is being recommended. So police goes from 14,600 square feet to 16,330 square feet, again, as a target program. Fire, we're combining both of your stations' areas, 9,900 square feet, and going to 16,300 square feet. So a bit of an increase there. So those total space needs we're seeing as a target right now, just a little under 33,000 square feet, and of that square footage, a little over 5,000 square feet is shared space between those two entities. And as Mark said, that's a really, in our experience, almost unprecedented degree of sharing. So this is a very creative and forward-looking and efficient use of space that we're able to share between your public safety entities. So, just to break that out a little bit further, what we're saying here is that you're about 28% short currently of what we're recommending, even with all of these efficiencies. So there are certainly pain points, there are certainly aspects of current facilities that are making it difficult for Chief Buckley and his staff to accomplish what they need to do to serve your residents. So I just wanted to show that specific element here. As part of this exercise, we've also been asked to look at how we can multi-use and multipurpose a potential development even further to incorporate some potential community spaces. So this, we thought, was worthy of a little bit more of a nuanced discussion. So a larger training board, a community space, you know, something at least twice the size of the room that we're sitting in right now. We had a specific recommendation of about 1,750 square feet, which is roughly twice the size of this room. Or could that be a small gym? Could that be, could that kind of space be in addition to this community space? Obviously, support space for that kind of space, like storage, support space for Riverside TV. A catering and teaching kitchen, this is something that would not only support programming and rental events, that would be part of that larger community space, but could be something that could hold programs and drive rental revenue on its own with the Park and Rec Department. Obviously, for this kind of facility where we have these public spaces, we have to support those spaces. With a lobby and entry vestibule, we need to have the right restroom facilities to support those spaces. We also find in a number of the municipalities that we work with that one size does not fit all with respect to meeting and community spaces, so one or two small to medium-sized conference or meeting spaces are also very useful for community as well as staff use. And then, we also looked at the potential, because our program for public safety does include some fitness space for police and fire, what if that were to be incrementally increased or enlarged to potentially include a fitness components and a size of those components for public space? So, just going through some photo examples, we are way, way, I would say, at the beginning of the process in terms of design or planning, but these are just examples of types of spaces about the size that we're talking about. So a community training board space of around 1,750 to 2,000 square feet, nice glass, potentially divisible, proper AV, that's really what we're looking at there. When we say "small gym," what does that mean? Something that isn't quite basketball court-sized, but has a higher ceiling, has the right finishes, has the right flooring, has the right acoustic treatment to be able to really multipurpose and do a lot of things with. It's an example of a space we did a few years ago. Actually, this was for a park district, but they use it both for active programs as well as meeting space. That catering/teaching kitchen, I think a picture really says a thousand words, doesn't it? So what does this mean? Something that can not only be used by caterers who come in and serve an event, but something that can actually be programmed for adult programs, for youth programs. So it doesn't take a lot more square footage to make that space something that can really be engaged and programmed as a community asset and something that can be provided as programming by the Village and most likely the Parks and Rec Department. When I said those small to medium meeting spaces that hold six to eight, maybe 10 people for smaller meetings, for smaller events, this is the kind of space we're talking about, the kind of size we're talking about. And then fitness, you know, this is something where you really just try to get multiple types of equipment in a slightly larger space, try to encourage a connection to the outdoors and nature, to the extent we possibly can. And speaking of connection to outdoors, it's even possible that, as this comes together, given the site, given the wonderful views that we have of the Displanes River, that there may even be some potential for some outdoor programming space or community space as part of this, to the extent that that makes sense, and that's something we'll be looking at as we get into this. So what we've done here, we've put this on a slide just to show you what each of these spaces means in terms of overall square footage. So what we're saying here is that all of these spaces, including gross area, which is all of these spaces, um, including, um, gross area, which is space for mechanical, the space the walls take up, um, things of that nature, adds about another seventy-two hundred square feet to this overall program. Um, so, um, what do, what does that mean? We're looking at, um, public safety space recommendation of about thirty-two thousand six hundred and thirty square feet, um, potential community spaces, um, of about seven thousand two hundred and twenty square feet. We have been, Mark and I have been doing this long enough to know that it's very hard to have these conversations without talking about the budget, um, very, very, um, early on. So what we want to emphasize is that we have some recent numbers for, um, from our projects that we are currently developing and building, um, for new construction. Now, that doesn't say that it's a foregone conclusion that all of this is going to be new. We're certainly going to evaluate the existing buildings and see how we can integrate this program into, into it and to what extent that makes sense. But, um, to provide initial numbers at what we're seeing for all-in, um, new construction, those are numbers that we are seeing the market bearing right now. So it's giving you, um, total, what we're calling very preliminary budget ranges of roughly between twenty-two and twenty-four million dollars, um, for that entire, um, development. Uh, now, um, is that what it has to cost? Is that what it has to be? Of course not. Um, part of our process, as you probably saw in the space programming, is that we develop all of these space recommendations as a series of ranges as well as the targets. So, any of or all of those spaces can move up and down as necessary to meet your program needs and to meet your fiscal realities, right? So, um, we can certainly look at moving towards the lower ends of those ranges if we're looking to save money or hit a specific budget target. And there's also always the possibility to phase some of these improvements over time. Again, that's part of what we'll be looking at next is, how do we actually do this? Um, how do these square footages work, um, with the property you have, with the buildings you have? And we'll be looking at a number of options. So, you could certainly, um, go for the full target areas, um, for public safety and look towards the lower ranges of those community spaces, um, which helps those numbers inch down a little bit more. And, another alternative is to really just immediately go to, um, the lower ranges for those spaces. Um, and you can see that that does start to bring, um, total project costs in, um, around or below that twenty million dollar mark. So, again, it's very, very preliminary. Nothing has been designed. This is about making sure we're capturing the right spaces, the space needs that we're making public safety efficient, that we're looking for opportunities to provide community space as part of a potential development in the future and just giving you a very early idea of, um, what that budget could look like. So, um, what comes next? As Mark mentioned, um, we certainly wanted to get your feedback and, or any questions we can this evening about what we've presented and found so far. Our next steps will be to start taking these programs and start looking very diagrammatically about what this means. We'll certainly look at remodeling, um, your existing properties. We'll, um, look to see if any additions make sense. We will look at some new construction and evaluate, um, all of the pros and cons, and you'll, um, you'll start to see an update from us, um, at your second meeting here in July. So, um, that's what, that's where we are right now. We, Mark and I would love to, um, be able to answer any questions you might have. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Andy and Mark. Trustees, questions?
Just a question on the dollar figure. So the, and understand it's very preliminary. We won't hold you to it, but those, those are based on conceptually, uh, a full new construction.
That is-
It's not just for the seven thousand new square feet.
Yes. That, that is assuming that that entire, in this case, thirty-three thousand two hundred and sixty square feet on this slide is all in new construction. Um, obviously, we don't know whether it will really be that yet, but it's, I shouldn't say it's always safe to assume, but, um, it's easier for us to put a solid square foot number on new construction than renovation, because that's going to vary greatly depending on what we actually do. So yes, that's for new construction.
Thank you.
Any other trustee comments, questions? Well, it's exciting, uh, presentation. Thank you. Um, we appreciate the information. I, the consensus of the board is to move forward, I assume?
Absolutely.
So, we'd ask that you keep at it, and we'll see you back in July.
Sounds good. Thank you very much, everybody.
Uh, I should, I should mention, does anyone from the public have anything, any comments they'd like to make on this before I move on? Singnan, Manager Francis, anything else?
No, that is it.
Thank you very much. Next item under pending business is an ordinance authorizing renewal of aggregation program for electrical load. Clerk Saul.
Good evening. Uh, staff is requesting tonight, uh, feedback on whether to continue the village's municipal opt-out aggregation program. Um, very briefly, this program is, allows the village to have a fixed rate, uh, on the supply side of resident and small businesses' electric, electric bills each month. Uh, the village has operated an aggregation program since 2012. Currently, the village is with Dynegy Energy Services at a rate of seven point five seven cents per kilowatt hour. You'll notice on the bid tabulation up on the screen tonight and in front of you that the rates, particularly the rates for green energy, are higher than the current rate that the village has. Um, I'll bring Sharon Derling up in a minute, the village's aggregation consultant, to go through this bid tabulation, but I just thought I'd mention that if the village board would like to continue with the aggregation program into 2024 and 25, um, a decision would be, had to be made on one of these bids this evening. So with that, I'll bring up Sharon to go through the bid tabulation.
Thank you. I haven't much to add, but I guess I will anyway. I always do. Um, pleasure to be here and happy to respond to any questions. It's, um, not a super simple answer, can get a little complex, but I'll try to boil it down to three things. One, the first one's easy, you can just end the program and, and have no, no offering for your residents. And then, two, um, the bottom portion, a fixed rate where there's quite, I would describe as fairly high premium to the current commed rate for your residents if you want to continue at one hundred percent green energy. And part of that premium is not just for the green energy, it's the cost of the actual supply. Suppliers aren't able to get supply lower than commed. So that, again, that premium is not just for the green, as you'll note, under, um, the lowest, uh, fixed rate, bottom line is MC squared energy services for twelve months is seven sixty-nine. That compares with the new commed rate in October of six sixty-two. So that full cent is, still doesn't even get you green energy, just to be clear about that. So the third option is what most of our communities do, um, a commed price match program, so there's zero rate risk for your residents. No one's ever paying a penny more than commed. Today, um, we're able to get ten percent green energy for the village and not more. So zero risk and less green energy that I know you've, um, enjoyed providing to your residents. Those are the three options as I see them. There's more detail, but happy to respond to questions.
Thank you. Questions? Comments? What's the board's?
It's just disappointing.
Yeah.
It's really disappointing. The price of energy just keeps going up and, you know, the price of green energy is at a premium. So, it's, uh, you know, hopefully we can move towards more, um, aggregation relating to solar in the future, uh, when more of these facilities are built.
That would be maybe at best possibly a ten percent discount to the commed rate. Could be years. I know I kind of teased you last year a little bit with that being out there, but things take a really long time. Um, the ICC hasn't even really responded about that, but I hear, I hear that good comment and disappointment.
I think it's important to note too, um, Sharon, uh, was able to put together today after receiving the bids, that if the village were to select a hundred percent green energy, which we have now, uh, the cheapest option would be, uh, the twelve-month with MC squared, uh, at eight, eight oh nine. And if that were selected, um, then what does that mean for the average household in Riverside? And so you can see that compared to the annual commed rate, um, of six point sixty-two for a hundred percent, uh, you're looking at about a hundred and twenty-five dollar premium for that a hundred percent green energy. Granted, these are estimates and that's over the course of a year, um, would be the premium. And then you could look at fifty percent what that would look like at the cheapest rate and so forth, all the way down to traditional brown energy.
So that, the average household-
The average-
Based on the average consumption of the average-sized household.
Correct.
So, if we went with, strictly with the commed program, that no renewable, uh, rates are still going to go up by an average of ninety-one dollars a year.
Not technically. Yeah. So if we did the, uh, you'll see in the top right corner, the ten percent, uh, EPA partner option, that is a commed price match. So that is whatever the commed rate is at a given time, that is what resi- all residents and small businesses would be paying. That still keeps us enrolled in the EPA green power partnership program, but we'd go from, I think Sharon said, we were currently number two in the country for percent of green power consumed. We dropped down to-
Still in the top hundred.
Yeah, top hundred.
Pretty amazing. Just not many are at that level.
Yeah.
But also, I'll say president, your current rate for your residents is seven fifty-seven, and the commed rate in October will be six sixty-two. So should you choose that top option with a smaller portion of energy, uh, folks would enjoy a decrease in the supply portion of their commed bill, roughly ninety dollars. That would be something they might feel annualized. Incrementally adds up ninety dollars over a year.
So then, going back to the other table, I'm just trying to pinpoint for the board exactly what that means for the average household, and, uh, I'm still not, I don't think I'm still understanding it quite yet.
If I could point out, um, the first box, traditional brown energy, MC squared offers the lowest rate. That rate is seven sixty-nine. The commed rate is six sixty-two. So, obviously, that's moot. You wouldn't offer the same thing as commed, no benefit, no nothing. So that box, ninety-two dollars extra, and you get nothing. So, because that compares with commed. So you wouldn't even consider that. We just threw that up there, didn't throw it up there, put that up there as a point of information. Um, for twenty-five percent green energy, it's not much more than it would be at the, at the zero. So, again, this is over the course of a year. The average participating household would pay that premium. Um, in the far right-hand box, a hundred twenty-five dollars, a little over ten dollars per month.
And, and of course, as always, residents can opt out.
Residents are automatically enrolled, but they can opt out at any point within, uh, the twelve-month period.
I, I love data, and if I may, last year, your price was a little bit, a smaller premium. Right now, folks have been paying less than five dollars per month premium. We've talked about that. Um, but it's interesting to note that the opt-out rate was fairly low. I was a little bit surprised. It was nine percent. That's about average for a community, even when they're saving money. So that speaks to, I think, confidence in your choice and maybe buy-in from residents, because anyone can opt out anytime, and there was not a hundred percent opt-out, just as nine percent is smallish.
And it, correct me if I'm wrong, but it also indicates that residents are willing to pay for green energy.
Correct.
Right. So, we need to give direction. A decision needs to be made this evening, correct, on how we proceed. So, trustees, what are your, your thoughts?
I, I just would like to say that there are certain circumstances, um, where opting out, um, where there are programs for low-income, uh, low to moderate income, uh, solar for residents, uh, can be a very good option. They can, you know, save above and beyond these rates, and I think we need to advertise-
We can help with that, yes.
For those residents, um, what those programs are, so that they are having the option to receive green energy, um, at an actually lower rate, because that, that, that is a premium for our residents.
It is.
And I acknowledge that. Um, but I, I do see the benefits to aggregation as well.
Yeah. Sorry to be interrupted. There are probably very few that would, uh, qualify your near community. They have to be, uh, below a certain income level, but certainly some may exist, and we could help you, you know, make the information. Even if you're enrolled in LIHEAT, for example, you can still get up to fifty percent off. So that's helpful for the, I don't know, the percentage is very small, but it's important to know. So again, kind of zero, you can end the program.
And just to clarify, if we do not opt into, if we do not select one of these rates tonight, what will happen is, come October, when our contract with Dynegy ends, residents will then be re-enrolled just with commed. So whatever the commed rate is, it fluctuates throughout the year, a few times a year to a handful, um, that would be the, the supply rate, and that would be traditional energy, uh, no green, uh, aspect to that. Um, but that's what would happen if we don't choose one of the options tonight. So it's definitely not required, um, but the options we have in front of us are the only options.
Are you taking comments from, uh?
Public comments at all?
We can, we can move to that right now.
Okay.
Sure. Yeah. Uh, does anyone in the public want to comment? Please, please come to the podium, give your name. Yeah, sorry.
Makes it official.
This is about Kelly Clark, something about solar. Um, I would just, um, uh, anecdotally say that we opted out last year because we installed solar panels through Sunrun. It was easy to opt out. It was confusing when I was a new resident that I was supposed to opt out if I didn't want it, and so I just went along with it, which is what most people probably do. Um, and since we've had our, thinking about lower income or just other folks, since we've put in our solar panels, we pay Sunrun forty dollars a month, and our electricity bill has been between fourteen and sixteen dollars a month, every month for the last twelve months. Um, so I think, just, that is the information that I have. You know, we generate a lot of electricity in the summer when there's more sun. We earn credits, and then it restarts over the next year. We don't own the panels. They belong to the company in twenty years. When the lease ends, you either buy them outright, they replace them, or they take them, like, or they take them off. Like, so it's, it's part of the house now. Um, but, just, I'll add that, that that, it's a, like, very compelling option for people who want to go green. Um, that's it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Uh, anyone else from the public? Yes.
Perry Montgomery. Um, being in those opt-outs, I've seen those before. Is there a way to show what you annualize as the possible savings or extra you would pay? I don't necessarily say, see that when I get the thing in the mail to say to opt out, it doesn't tell me if you opt out or if you don't, here's the premium you will pay. So, I know I can opt out, but I don't really know what that actually does for me. Right? So, a resident may not know that, hey, I can save a couple hundred bucks a month, especially low income. I don't know, is there a way to do that?
Well, we'd love to, but, um, no, because the regulatory bodies don't let us even reference the commed rate. But it tells us where to go to look through that information. And we take calls all the time. Not a lot of people call. We're happy to talk about that. As you can see, I enjoy talking about this. I will throw out one more anecdotal thing to, um, the top quartile, green energy, you could have zero rate risk and still continue as your, with your EPA partnership. I'll say that ten percent looks low. It's disappointing. Um, very few commu- I haven't done ten percent for community in several years. It's five percent, five percent, five percent. So, just throwing out anecdotal, it's double than what I've been able to get. I said the MC squared, we really, this is important to the community, and they doubled it, which is a little unusual, although I understand it's a bit disappointing. But, that's that.
So, Ethan, if you could go to that, back to that other slide, I, perhaps I'm being a little thick-headed here. I'm still trying to understand it. So, under traditional brown energy, compared to just going to the commed rate, uh, that costs ninety-one dollars more a year. Is that, am I reading that?
Correct. The, the difference between the two would be that that rate of seven sixty-nine would be fixed for twelve months, and the current commed rate, which is lower, six sixty-two, uh, is not fixed. So that will go up and down throughout the year. So it's cheaper now. Uh, doesn't mean it will be, um, but it is cheaper now.
So going with that option would be a gamble that, uh, I mean, that gets us no green energy, and it's a gamble that commed rates are going to go up and it'll actually save people money potentially, because you got a guaranteed price.
Right.
That commed rate we know is going to be six sixty-two base for eight months. So, when you say gamble, it would be- say gamble, it would be very small odds of winning, put it in those terms. But yes, you're understanding it perfectly. So that would not be advisable.
And then if we go with 25, 50% or 100% green energy, the increment goes from $99 to $125.
Correct. The only thing that isn't represented on this table is the ComEd price match, which is we still get 10% green energy. We still get on the EPA list, but it's a fixed rate of whatever, or not a fixed rate, it's whatever the ComEd rate is.
Yeah.
So, but the whole village is, is there.
I mean, it, it seems to be that choosing between traditional brown energy, 25, 50, 100%, that increment is, is only $34 a month, or year, right? So it's, that tells me that the real choice is between just going back to ComEd, traditional pricing, or going 100% green. Because if the increment is only 36, $34 a year, why not go 100% green, right?
10% green at zero rate risk, you're saying, on the other chart? What was that, what you're saying?
Going 100% green energy costing residents potentially an average $125 a year. And of course, they can opt out versus going the traditional brown energy with the guaranteed rate that only saves $34 a year. So I don't know why we would, personally, I would, for $34 more a year, I'm more than happy to pay for green energy.
Really need to look at it is there's zero, we could have left out that box because that $91 premium, you're getting nothing for that. So you can't really compare with that. That is a non-starter.
I get it.
So you could stay with ComEd or pay too much for the exact same thing and you wouldn't do that. So it's really, I compared, you know, the 125 premium. And again, that ComEd rate is floating. It could go up or down. Historically, it's hovered right around the base. So that's the best information we have. It's a 662. The best information we have today is likely folks would be paying $10 per month premium. And they can opt out. So that's your choice. That or zero risk and dropping down to 10% still retaining your status.
Trustees, someone like to make a motion or a comment or?
So if we vote tonight for the 100%, everyone can, anyone can opt out at any time. And do we do communication every time that we make a change?
Yes, by law, yes, we do.
Legally required to.
Okay.
Every resident receives a notice per the regulation.
And maybe we could do some additional information as suggested by the gentleman back there. I'm sorry, I forgot your name already.
Mr. Montgomery?
We typically do. We'll make a landing page where residents can get the information. We'll make a trending article where they can easily go to the landing page to, to get that additional information. And we still, we still get calls and we handle those calls. Obviously, if it's more nuanced, then we send it over to Sharon and her team to, to assist the resident.
Okay.
And we also on that landing page reference the Illinois Solar for All Low to Moderate Income programs and, you know, options that.
Sure.
Like specifically identify what people might choose if they were to opt out.
Sure.
That doesn't violate any terms, does it?
Not at all. In fact, they're not mutually exclusive. So you could be a LiHeat customer, still be enrolled, LiHeat customer who gets the 50% solar for all. It's a little bit, bit of paperwork to get there. They've got to show some tax information. That's kind of a hump for people to get over. And they can be in the aggregation program. So not mutually exclusive.
Okay. What, what parts of that, Sharon, would you be able to help or facilitate a resident through? Obviously, the aggregation pieces, you're, you manage that. But if they wanted assistance with understanding LiHeat, if it was with the aggregation, would your team be able to help with that? But if they did the, the solar part, would they be able to help?
Yes, we work with solar companies who specifically focus on that Illinois Solar for All ILSFA.
Okay.
Be happy to put that all together. Copious information and links, like links to the current, because the ComEd rate changes every single month. We have a link to where you can find it every single month. Comes out about the 17th of the month. It's the most exciting day for me. Nobody else cares, but I.
Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Do I? You'd help with language. I'll just make a motion, make a motion for the 100% green energy option.
With MC squared?
Yeah.
Is that sufficient?
I think it was 12 months.
12 months.
12 months.
Right, right, right. Okay.
And I will second that motion.
Motion by trustee Evans, second by trustee Marsh Ozga. Any discussion on the motion?
That's MC squared energy services at 8.09 cents per kilowatt hour. Did we say all that? Because I, I don't hear real well.
Did you not hear all that?
That's what I heard.
Plus that, okay.
The 100% green energy option, yeah, right?
Yeah.
So any further discussion on the motion? If not, clerk soul.
No.
Oh, sorry.
No, we have a motion. That's right, that's right.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second, yeah.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Koss.
Aye.
Trustee Galagos.
Aye.
Trustee Marsh Ozga.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Thank you. Yeah, I know this is a difficult decision, but I'm very proud of this board to take that step. I think this community, as I said before, supports renewable energy and we can see by our past actions that people have appreciated and joined in and supporting that.
I think your trust, I just enjoy working with you. I've never seen, never a poor decision. It's a hard decision sometimes. And we'll keep in touch about the opt out rates. It gives sort of a vote of confidence in, you know, how people are responding. So happy to do that.
Thank you. The motion is approved. See, under pending business, draft referendum question, manager Francis.
Thank you. I'll do a bit of an introduction of how we've gotten to this point. And then attorney Filippini will actually speak as it relates to the question that's been drafted. So as the board will recall, and residents may recall, in 2004 and 2014, there was a referendum question about issuing debt. And so the, both referendums were approved in 2004, almost 85% residents approved that referendum. And in 2014, 77% approved it. That referendum wording was such that shall the Village of Riverside, Cook County, Illinois, for the purpose of making road and street improvements within the village, issue bonds to the amount of 2.5 million for the purpose of paying the cost thereof. And so now we fast forward to current day. It's been the past practice of the village to issue bonds or to go rather, to the voters to request approval for issuance of these bonds every 10 years. And so the board has had an ongoing discussion for the past couple of years, planning for this moment in time of whether or not we want to continue down that path to keep property tax levels stable as it relates to this particular piece, or do we want to do something different? And the board had discussion in the later part of last year and early this year that it would serve the village's best interest to have a tax levy question as it related to streets and having a permanent funding source specifically for street and sidewalk improvement versus having to spend the money every 10 years to issue bonds, pay for that debt issuance, pay for the interest on that debt issuance. And Ethan, if you can go to the next slide. So just for residents to have as a reference, the Village of Riverside of your entire property tax bill represents approximately 15.3% of the taxes that are being paid. And with that comes your streets, police, fire, public works, all of that. And so when we're talking about the referendum piece, that, that is a small piece of your overall tax bill because the village is only 15.3% of that. With the, the way in which this referendum would be set up, it would be property tax neutral. So similar to what we've done over the past 20 years with the re-issuance of the same level of bonding, it would not increase a resident's property tax bill. And so as noted there, it's property tax neutral. However, the nearly, it's nearly $550,000. We pay extra as part of that debt issuance because we have to pay for the debt issuances, we have all the various regulatory filings, legal and the interest. And so that, that half million plus dollars that is spent is not going into the streets. And so the board felt it was prudent to look at doing a permanent tax levy. And now I shall turn it over to attorney Filippini.
When we look at the options for the permanent tax levy, we have essentially three. These are all related to the property tax extension limitation law. I may, I may refer to it as PTEL along the way. So if you're wondering, what on earth is he saying? That's what I'm referring to. So PTEL allows you to adjust your tax rates above what the typical PTEL limitations are, which is either CPI or 5%, whichever is less, but only in three instances. One would be for a short term, not more than four year program. So that option goes out the window as far as what we're trying to do. Two would be when there's a new tax available that has not yet been accessed, then the village could seek that access through the referendum process. And that would be the way to add to the tax levy without the restrictions on PTEL for instituting that tax. Now, we have in fact had, albeit small, the street and, and bridge tax levy in our levy for, for a variety of years or a number of years. So that would not be immediately available. I'll get back to that word immediately available when I finish my next option. And that is one which would be an extension limitation. Now, when you go through PTEL, there's all sorts of formulas, but basically it's, you can do more than 5%. And the effect of that is that by increasing it by more than 5% that one year, you get more money. But then that amount will be able to carry forward each year. So if you think about it, you know, 5% on $100 is 105%. But if you're able to kick it up to $110, the 5% of that, and I should have done something easier to make myself less math challenged, but the effect of that would be 115, 50. I think I got that right. And you can check me on that. And so you, you see that you've got that extra bump, but it won't be an increase of more than 5% more than one year. It's only the one year, but the effect of that one year will then carry forward. So the, the option that we have recommended would be that third one because it would allow the village to get that question before the, the village residents immediately. And it would allow that, that switch from debt service levy to an annual levy right away. Is that the right, yeah, okay. If, if you look up there, you see at the very bottom, the question. You're saying, why on earth is it, is it that question? It's because that's what the statute says. We don't have a choice. The statute gives us three options and the statute tells us what the language are, what the language must be for each of these. And there are some blanks to be filled in, but those are the blanks regarding Village of Riverside, Cook County, Illinois. The state lets us put that in. The percentage, the state lets us put that in and the number of years over which it would occur. Now, I would note, there is in this option that's before you, the ability to, to phase this in over several years. But if we do it that way, we won't be able to match up the, the levy dropping off from the bond, debt service with the, the new taxes coming in. And it will also have an interruption on the level of investment we're making in the roads. So the approach that's up there is, is the one that will allow us to continue. I did mention immediately available as to one of those options. One of those options would be is if we completely discontinued for our 2024 tax levy, the one that's upcoming in December, our street, our street levy, then we go down to zero in that levy. And then next year, we bring a question that would say, and I'll, I'll give you what the language would be specifically because it, again, is prescribed by statute. Sorry, I'm fumbling a bit here. That question would be, shall the Village of Riverside be authorized to levy a new tax for street and bridges and have an additional tax of, and that's a, under the street and bridge tax, would be a 0.1% of equalized assessed valuation for the taxable property there and extended for such purposes. We could do that. Two impacts of that. One, we would get zero for, for this upcoming year. Two, we're actually going to then see the tax bills drop for everyone because we won't have that revenue, that 200 and roughly $260,000 of revenue. And then it's going to go up again. So if we want to maintain the level tax levy for the residents and be able to continue the program for road improvements that we have been doing, the only choice we have would be this question. Now, I would add one other thing. If you've had a chance to look at the draft referendum question and resolution that's in the packet, one of the most important things with any kind of referendum is to inform the residents of what the question is and what it does and what the impacts are. So if you're relying simply on the question, then you're already probably lost. You know, public information is critical. The village can't advocate, but the, the village can inform. And the information I would suggest would start at the time you all decide whether to put that question on the ballot. And we've, we've offered a draft that tries to tell the story. Tells the story about what it's going to be used for. Tells the story about how we're, we're spending monies for things that are soft costs that don't get into the roadways by issuing bonds. Identifying that we issued bonds in 2014 in an interest rate environment where the Fed rate was under 1%. And it's sure as shoot not that anymore. So you're not going to see the kind of bang for your buck if you go back and ask for a bond referendum this year as opposed to doing it this way. So you're saving that money too. And all of that is important to let the voters understand why the village is, is offering this question instead of the traditional approach of saying, do we want to issue X number of dollars of bonds to be paid over 10, you know, that what we've done in 2004 and 2014. So my suggestion to you is if you want to go to a annualized levy, which gives you a more, a more regular confident and therefore can have a more stable program for road improvements. And if you want to have basically the same revenue and, and enjoy the savings that come from not having to issue the bonds and to be able to do it right away, then this would be the question to, to adopt. And that should be coupled with a robust informational campaign to the residents so they understand not only what the question is, but what the village's intent is for purposes of doing that. Now, a question that President Pollak had raised with me and maybe others of you are thinking the same thing. Can the village, in addition to saying, this is why we're doing it, actually adopt an ordinance saying, and that money's going to be used for this purpose? Yes, the village board can do that. And so, you know, it's a matter of sort of putting your, your money where your mouth is on, on this issue because it's an important element, I think, of informing the voters what you're going to be doing. So that's kind of the approach that we took, the question that we came up with as a result. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to try to address them.
Any direct questions for attorney Filippini? So some background on this, just in layman's terms. You know, we've, for 20 years, we've borrowed money to maintain our streets. Borrowing money for something that will never. Borrowing money for something that will never go away is just not prudent. It's just not responsible, in my opinion. We've lost out on maybe a million dollars' worth of street improvements by borrowing money the last 20 years. Five, half a million to a million dollars. That's a whole street that we could have done in addition to the ones we did do. So, to say we're going to borrow money again, to do it again, knowing that we'll have to do it again in 10 years, just does not seem to be a prudent way to do financing in the municipality. And I should also say, too, that I have heard from residents who would like better streets. I think our, our streets aren't, aren't the worst around, but they're also not the best around. We've got some streets that you drive down, and they're clearly are not being maintained at a level we'd like to see. I'm not promising that this will cure all that, but it will help. We'll add some money and, and we'll be able to do capital planning for streets much better because we'll know that we've always got X amount of dollars every year that's just for streets.
Certainly would have been a peanut on it.
Right, absolutely. Yeah, yeah. So, that's my pitch. But I do, you know, after talking with Attorney Filippini and Manager Francis this week several times about this, you know, the language is frustrating. And, you know, if, if any of us were to walk into a ballot booth without any background information and saw this, we'd be like, I don't know what this is, I'm going to vote no. So, it's incumbent upon us to educate the public, and I should clarify, Attorney Filippini, correct me if I'm wrong, the village can spend resources educating the public, no problem there. Trustees and individuals can advocate to their hearts content for this. In other words, spend your own time, your own resources, talking to the community and, you know, telling them the benefits of doing it this way, so.
Just have a quick question. Is this, then, if we move to a referendum with this verbiage, is this only good for each tax year and we then have to come back and do it again, or is it permanent? I, I don't understand the reference to 2024.
This would say, if you, if you remember with the PTEL requirements, let's just say the interest rate's 5% for simplicity. We are, if we levy X dollars one year, we can levy 105% of X to next. What this would allow is for 2024, that's the levy, and the question comes up in November, so we'll know whether we'll be able to, in 2024, for our tax levy, rely on the, on a favorable outcome, we would be able to do, let me see, 9.3, we'd be able to levy 109.3% of the prior year's levy. And then, that would put us at that level. After that, we go back to the 5%, 5%, but we increase that base.
Oh.
So, it has a permanent effect, but the only time we're going to increase that levy beyond PTEL would be for this year and this year only.
So, got it.
Right. So, if anyone's concerned that, oh, we're letting, you know, Pandora's Box open and, and run rampant on us forever, no. It's a one-time shot to give us the shot in the arm to increase the levy for our standard amounts of, of taxes, not the, not the debt service, and, and put that into our programming of, of capital improvements as opposed to the, the yo-yo effect of issuing bonds.
Thank you. And maybe that could be part of the information that we give to residents, too, because the, the language is a little dense.
Yes. Trustee Gallo.
It does need to be unpacked.
No, I agree with everything that's been said. I mean, I do remember when Janet Yellen, when she was Fed Chair, you know, kept saying that interest rates were going to, to increase. Now, Chairperson Pollak has, has put that into action. So, those years of money being cheap is no longer with us, and they're probably not going to go down anytime soon. So, this would be a huge savings to the everyday resident. I would like to see that illustration that we had on the property tax neutral be used in part of that information packet, because that's going to be very, very helpful on, on this one, because I, I do believe that we have an obligation to share this with the public, that they are fully aware of what, what needs to get done and how this does save their bottom line anyways.
Right. Yeah, the, the underlying principle here is that we will, taxes will stay level, but we'll no longer be paying banks and others interest. We'll be keeping that money.
Yeah.
But again, no one's taxed.
Yeah.
Yeah. People's property tax will stay level, other than the normal cost of living adjustments that we have to make every year, so.
I see a lot of taking heads in the audience, so I think.
Yeah, well, Trustee Evans.
So, we have to manage expectations, just so that people understand, it's not a street fund referendum where we're asking for a large amount of money and then we're going to, they're going, we're going to immediately, like, make all the street improvements. It's just switching one way of paying
Right.
for another where we save a lot of interest. That's, is that?
Good point.
And, and through the CIP process, what we will do is, we're in the process of creating an interactive map with our GIS consultant that we will map out the next 10 years of street improvements as well. All of this is contingent upon having that funding source or issuing debt. If we don't have that, then we've got to reprioritize and change some of that. The, the effectiveness of what we've done over the past 12 years is, we've actually, every time we touch a street, we're touching not just the roadway, we're touching what's underneath. And so, we're really trying to maximize every dollar of, do we have to, you know, increase the capacity of the sewer? Do we have to upsize the water main? And now, we have to do lead service lines. And so, we're touching all those different pieces, and so, that's part of the, that prioritization, too. But we'll have a map, we're working on, we're working on updating the CIP, but we'll have all those integrative, interactive pieces of it, too, so that residents will be able to stand, have an understanding. Thanks.
Anyone from the public want to comment on this matter?
I'd like to.
Thank you.
What's Plan B if we do this and it fails? So, we put this on the referendum, people shoot it down, what's Plan B for street improvements at that point?
As, as I understand it, there's a couple of options. One would be to come back with, well, one would be to do nothing and just let our, our roads fall apart. That's an option. It's an exaggeration, too. I apologize for that. But the other option to continue with the funding would be to come back for, for a separate referendum, a different referendum, asking to borrow money, as we did the last, twice in the last 20 years. I don't know that there's any other options.
I, I think that there may be a third option, but I think if it doesn't pass, then we will probably have a significant reduction in our road program for the calendar year 2025, because there won't be revenue.
Absolutely.
Right.
We would then have options, either through another street bond referendum, or if we end up having this fail, and then the village zeros out its road and bridge tax in 2024, a referendum could be in 2025 exclusively for the street and bridge tax. So, the, the, we're not going to be completely handcuffed, but we will see a decided drop in revenues available for road purposes unless you make other changes in your priorities to take from one to, to feed the road program.
Well, and that referendum would be a lot harder to pass, because that referendum would, would have the verbiage of, would you like us to have a new tax as opposed to the convoluted wording that's here? But it will actually say new tax in the new one, which I feel like will even be even harder to pass than something that says the lesser of the two and the, you know, all that good stuff.
Thanks for language.
Yes.
Are you saying, does this chart say that my taxes are not going to go up, but there's more money available for roads?
Absolutely.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
If I might just clarify, the way this is set up, the debt service that drops off will equal the amount that the new tax will go up.
Right.
Where the savings is, is not in terms of the tax bill, but in not having to then spend a chunk of the bond revenues that you would otherwise do for the soft costs of attorney's interest and the like. So, there is a real savings, but it won't necessarily be on the tax bill itself. The tax bill should be stable, whereas the savings are in the amount available for the roads.
Yeah.
And, and to be clear, the municipal portion of the property tax, it's the only thing we can address, which is only 16% of your property tax, so. Anyone else from the public? Anything else from board? There's no decisions to be made, no motions to be made, and.
Language or anything tonight?
We'll be back with the final, in ordinance or resolution form.
So, we have the draft, and so, if the board is supportive of these items, then we would come back for you to do formal action. I believe there, there is a timeline of a publication notice and other things that were outlined within the agenda history sheet, that we just need to make sure that everything is approved and wrapped up by early August. So, essentially, the last meeting in July, just to make sure that we're affording ourselves sufficient time for filing.
Seeing no other comments, we'll move on. That's direction to the staff to continue with this referendum question. New business, an ordinance amending Title VIII, Section 8-6-2, water service charges, and an ordinance amending Section 8-7-9, sewage.
What about the house?
Did I miss something?
Amy?
We are on XA, an ordinance with 169 Berry Point Road.
Oh, sorry, my.
169 Berry Point?
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry about that. Okay, 10A, an ordinance approving and designating 169 Berry Point Road as a Village of Riverside local historic landmark. Planner Siren is handling that, right? Thank you.
The house that was designed at Berry Point is a former storefront, probably held in the windows. It was developed with the residents above it, and it's currently a single-family use. The Preservation Commission and Historical Commission both voted unanimously to recommend that it be considered a local landmark buildings. If the ordinance is approved, the owners are aware that all the exterior changes that they made to those buildings going forward would require approval from the Preservation Commission.
I remember that house was for sale 20 years ago.
It's a unique house, that's for sure. I love the old pictures of when it was a storefront. Yeah. Any questions, comments from the trustees? Anyone from the public have anything to comment on here? If not, can I get a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Trustee Evans, second by Trustee Marsh Azka, manager, or Clerk Soul.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Cos.
Aye.
Trustee Gallo.
Aye.
Trustee Marsh Azka.
Aye.
Trustee Clark.
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thank you. 10B, it's discussion regarding a major amendment to an approved site plan for 2710 South Harlem Avenue. Planner Siren.
Dr. N, if you could attend, tonight's meeting is requesting that the fence that's shown on his approved site plan for this new parking lot to be removed from the site plan, which is considered a major amendment to the site plan. So, just orient us. Is that showing up on the screen? Oh, I might have to use a laser pointer. Thank you, Ethan. Bottom one, okay. So, just to get oriented here, here we're on Harlem Avenue, connected to Long Common. Here's the Shiny Smiles Shopping Center, a few other tenants in there. You can see shopping area here, there's a path through, parking here. There is a new parking lot developed on this property. No fence in this location, no fence along here. And this is the Starbucks dispensary with the attendant parking here. There's no connection between this parking lot and this new parking lot. This alley here connects Long Common with Berkeley Road, and you can see the two single-family residences here, and each of those residences have a six-foot fence along them. There is, along this commercial area, a fence here along the back of the Starbucks site. So, in 2020, the board approved a site plan for, excuse me, the PCC at that time, approved the site plan for the new parking lot. And that included, though it's not required by the ordinance, a fence in that area of the alley. And now, Dr. N is requesting to not install the fence, and he included in your packet documentation of why he's requesting that. I can go into that in detail if you'd like, but skipping ahead, the village, prior to the PCC meeting, were to, received two emails from residents of Berkeley and Burke Roads in opposition to removing the fence. Specifically, they want to reduce the nuisance behavior from Starbucks, increase privacy for the neighboring homes, and reduce the amount of traffic traveling down Berkeley and Burke Roads. And two residents also attended that PCC meeting to oppose removing the fence from the site plan. They gave similar reasons as the letter writers, and one stated there is a serious traffic flow problem in that area. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this major site plan amendment application on April 24th and voted unanimously four to zero to recommend not removing the fence from the site plan. I can go into their reasoning if you'd like. Some additional information about the request, images of the property dating to May 2008 show there was not a fence on this property when it was previously developed with a, a dry cleaning business. So, to our understanding, there has never been a fence in that area. As I mentioned, of the two residential properties on the alley, one is a six-foot tall fence, and the other property owner at 525 Berkeley just received a permit for a six-foot tall fence, so he's going to replace his five-foot tall fence with a six-foot tall fence. The police department has worked with Starbucks and neighbors in the area to resolve nuisance complaints as they are received. They have not received any complaints about public urination or smoking in the alley, which were mentioned in the letters and at the meeting. Staff encouraged neighbors who complained of these and other nuisance issues to contact the police department the next time that happens, so, you know, they can make an attempt to intervene with that person, or if the person's left the site, you know, review security footage of the issue and, and work with Starbucks to reduce those nuisance issues. And just a note about traffic on Berkeley Road, so Public Safety Director Buckley will provide a quarterly update on the Berkeley traffic counts during the June 20th board meeting. But looking at traffic counts that were taken by the village in mid-May, show an average of 130 daily trips down Berkeley Road. So, the average, and it ranges, but the average, daily, average daily trips for typical residents is 10, and a trip is one segment of a trip. So, going to work would be one trip, going back would be one, so two trips. So, for each house, you're looking at an average of 10 daily trips. So, on that section of Berkeley Road, which has 15 curb cuts, there's 130 average daily trips, which is less than you would expect. In comparison, KLOA did a village-wide traffic study in 2017 and provided traffic volumes for certain segments of road throughout the village. For example, one section that I looked at that had one of the lower traffic counts was Lionel Road between Delaplane and Ogden, that also has 15 curb cuts on that section of road. They had an average of 2100, 2100 daily trips. So, that's, so the 130 on Berkeley is about 6% of what that one section of Lionel's experiencing as a comparison. And again, I'd be happy to go through Dr. N's reasons for requesting the removal of the fence, Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations, but just a note in terms of one of the issues related to this, sorry. So, the village is currently working with Dr. N to add a gateway entry feature right here on the corner. So, again, currently, you can drive from this portion of the property and exit on the Long Common, or drive here and exit here, kind of maneuver throughout the site. So, there's a few different entryways. So, if you're parked here, you can exit here, travel down Long Common, and turn left or right to get to Harlem. You can also travel down here. There are, could be signs, I thoroughly threw the consideration of signs at the end of the alley here, encouraging folks to turn right and not travel down Berkeley. But you can turn right and then take a right onto Harlem. You couldn't take a left at this point onto Harlem. Going down here, we'll look at the new parking lot, this curb cut, you could take a left onto Harlem if traffic would allow. You could take a left onto Harlem if traffic would allow. You could also take a right, probably a right here would be advisable, and then a right here, or a kind of a dangerous, you may take a left. So you've got some options, believe. If the fence is installed, you're limiting movement out of this property to a right here, or traveling through here to get here, or traveling through here. But if the village and Dr. N work together to create a feature here, which is slightly different, then could you go to the next? Yeah, so this is a little bit differently oriented. So here we're looking at Harlem, up here, and Long Common here, and you can see the shopping center, the parking lot. That access from here through here to Long Common would be blocked by the entry feature and these two new parking spaces. So between having the fence and having this blocked off between the two, if that's the case, then you can exit here. You could try to turn left on Harlem depending on traffic and the time of day, but you can definitely turn right, but primarily, your exit is going to be, your safe exit is going to be a right onto Harlem. And I have a few photos of the alley, just to go through here. And here you can see, this is, standing here facing Harlem, Shiny Smiles is on your right, and the dispensary is over here to your left. You can see the fence of the dispensary here, and you can just see the alley here. And this is if you turned to your right and looked back behind Shiny Smiles. And this is a better view of the alley. This is 525 Berkeley, this is the back of the dispensary, and this is going down towards Berkeley. And on this side, this is looking down the alley, and this takes a dog leg. So the fence that you're looking at is actually a house that faces Long Common, so you kind of turn and then go around the side of the building, but that's the condition in that location. And then if you're standing with Shiny Smiles here to your, to your left, you can see that's the fence along 525 Berkeley that the owner's going to replace with a one-foot taller fence, a six-foot fence. But that's the condition currently.
Thank you, Planner Siren.
Thank you.
Just a couple of preface comments. Dr. Norimati had intended to be here. He emailed staff this afternoon and said he had a family emergency, and that's why he was unable to attend, but he was at the Planning and Zoning Commission and has been at previous board meetings. And also, I had pulled that alley improvement off the consent agenda, just because I think that if this property is not able to use that alley as they have historically, the board may want to reconsider the level of improvement they make back there, or not. But I just wanted to give you that option. So, any questions for Ann? Yes?
I have a question. And I don't remember which property it is, but I thought he said that he's only allowed to get a four-foot, somebody said that they're only allowed to get a four-foot fence. Is that not the case?
So that was the, actually, that's the fence that you're looking at right now. That is a five-foot fence.
Okay.
So, and I'm trying to remember, I believe it was late last year, that property had applied for a building permit for a fence in that location. And according to, taking a look at how the ordinance is written, to my reading, it looked like that we would need to amend the ordinance to allow that fence, or he would need to apply a variation, because there's a requirement for that, for it to be that way. We took another look at it, knowing that the owner was, you know, very interested in having that six-foot fence, and it, there is a six-foot fence that was permitted along the property on Long Common. We thought, well, maybe that was approved in error or a non-conforming fence. We reviewed some other fences in the area. Our understanding or our assumption is that there was a policy that did not read that code the same way that I was reading it.
Okay.
So we feel comfortable with our interpretation of the code. We think that's a fair interpretation, given what other people have along alleys, and so that's why he issued the building permit.
Okay, great, thank you.
May I ask a question? Could you, Clerk Sol, could you go back to the photo prior? That house, I think that's on Long Common, behind the beige, white-beige fence. So if you're, if that's the dentist on the left, right? You're going through, and that's how you get to the dog leg to go to Long Common. Am I oriented, okay. So my question is, that house that's there, are they experiencing, if there's no fence put here, are they experiencing traffic and light shining into the back of their home?
This property here?
No.
This property?
Yes.
I have not heard from those property owners. They haven't commented. I've reached out to them and let them know about the meetings, and they have not been in conversation with staff.
Am I looking at the back of their house, their backyard?
You're looking, yep, you're looking at the back of their house there, and there's their fence.
And their fence is six feet tall?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Trustee Evans.
If we, if we put the fence in, what, is it putting it in or taking the fence down?
I know, it's confusing.
There's no fence there, right?
There is no fence there.
He wants to not put the fence.
That's correct, he wants to not install the fence.
But if we move forward with the original plan of putting the fence up there, what impact does it have on commercial traffic?
So currently, the alley is, aside from just vehicular traffic, it's a service alley, effectively. Trash would, you know, be collected from that alley. I don't know that it would have an appreciable effect on deliveries to the area. Remains to be seen what kind of business might occupy, you know, those spaces in the future, and what kind of needs they would have. But obviously, you could, you could have a gate in the alley if you needed to provide access from a truck, but if you need to do major offloading, that might be an issue.
Right, so the plan is to put in pavers, permeable pavers through the whole alleyway, right?
That is my understanding, but I could be incorrect. Dan?
Current plan is to add permeable paper center ribbon, similar to our other alleys with concrete, you know, drive aisles on the other side. So yes, permeable paper alley is what's being proposed tonight. That was removed from the consent agenda in lieu of this discussion.
Thank you.
Yep.
And I'm assuming that's the garage that we received correspondence about, where he says he opens his garage, and there's people there?
That's correct.
Okay.
I don't know that, whether we have a fence there or not, if it's going to make any difference if people are going back there.
It did occur to me when thinking about this issue that there are two sides to the fence. So if people wanted to access the alley, they could go around by the Starbucks and Berkeley side and get through to the alley. So they could. I don't know how people are accessing the alley and getting there.
Sorry, I'm following that last comment. Are you saying that because there would be no, the site plan is approved, doesn't have a fence behind Starbucks?
No. If you wanted to, if you were wanting to access the alley and you were parked in the Starbucks parking lot, you would just slip over here. That's where the fence is. So for folks, and this doesn't accurately represent the, may represent the Starbucks parking, I can't remember how it's laid up, but I think these are all perpendicular parking spaces. So if you're parked back here, and for whatever reason you wanted to slip into the alley, you would just kind of walk around the corner.
Oh, on foot? You'd go through the little green median?
Precisely. So people could be accessing the alley on foot by going here, but they can also still access it this way, and there's, this fence wouldn't affect that at all. It would also, Public Safety Director Buckley pointed out, you know, it depends on your perspective on things. It would remove visibility of that alley from certain areas. So now you can see through the parking lot to the alley and see perhaps if someone's out there. You know, if you put the fence up, maybe they're less visible, depending on sightlines and security cameras.
And less visible means not good.
Possibly.
More smoking.
Yeah. Any other questions for Planner? Yes?
I have just a quick question. I can't remember. Is it a one-way alley?
No.
It's not directioned. You can go either way.
Would it impact the outcome for residents who are unhappy about traffic if it were one-way?
I think, believe the board had discussed that during the meeting, and if you'll give me a moment, I'll.
Yeah, there was discussion.
There was discussion about the one-way alley.
I just don't recall exactly how it went.
I believe at the time, there was a concern about safety about having a one-way alley, I believe, but I can confirm that if you give me just a second.
Thanks.
So if we put a fence up, or if we leave, if we force him to put the fence up, who benefits the most from the upgrade of the alley? What's the value of?
Well, I can try to answer that. Yeah, and that's a concern of mine, is that this commercial property has had the benefit of that public right-of-way indefinitely, as far as we know, since it was built. If they are denied access to the alley, they'd still be able to use it for servicing, but they would not be able to use it for circulation. I've always been concerned, even when we approved this site plan for 2710, that you've got a dead-end parking drive aisle. And so I think the circulation, if you're parking back there and you can't leave by the alley, how do you exit those parallel parking spaces on the side of the building? Ten-point turn, I guess? And even the perpendicular spaces on the left, you know, what happens if the front lot's full and you go back there to park, and it's full too? Now you've got to back up in a tight parking lot that people are walking through, and that's not an ideal situation either, so. So I, in my opinion, there's a significant circulation impact on the commercial property if you're, they're denied the use of that, of the public right-of-way. Any other questions before we go to the public? Anyone from the public want to speak to this? Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Julie Dealey, 521 Berkeley. We on Berkeley and Bird are both looking forward to the improvement of that alleyway. Just want to put that one out there first. That was, as we've been talking about the dispensary, that's been a big part of the conversation, is the beautification of that alleyway in this area. So we are looking forward to that. We are strongly in favor of the fence continuing to go up as it was originally planned, for a couple of reasons. One, the alleyway is not a thoroughfare. It is not a, it is not a roadway, it's not meant to be a roadway. It is, and it's becoming a busier place, because people do pull out of the parking lot there, they travel down the alley, there are fences on both sides, they can't see my kids and myself who are walking by, and so there's a blind spot there. And so there's a, there's a safety concern. It's also, this is an 18-spot parking lot, and I don't think the resident should have to bear the brunt of a high, a very busy business by handling also its traffic pattern by coming through our alley. I, you know, we think the fence needs to go up. That was the plan that was approved, that was done in collaboration with residents. We stood out there with President Joe Ballerine, and he showed us what this would look like several years ago, and so this is what's been promised to us, and it feels a little like Dr. N is not really working in good faith as a neighbor. And so we feel a little bit like this was a bait and switch. So that's what we have to say on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to the trustees, any comments or further discussion?
Planner Siren, and you, just to be clear, the, you all voted that the fence should go up with the change of the parking spaces, is that correct?
That was what the Planning and Zoning Commission voted this.
Unanimously, correct?
Yes.
I think that there needs to be a balance between, when it comes to the beautified, what will be a more beautified alleyway, there needs to be a balance between what it gives to the community and what it gives to our business community. So like, it can't just be a driveway for a couple houses, a new driveway. Kind of have to share the space and provide extra value to the businesses, and especially, you know, future businesses when Starbucks, when they move, because it's a temporary space.
I would add to that, that the dollars that are planned for the alley improvements are business district tax dollars generated by this property, for what that's worth. Any other discussion, comments?
I'm just curious as to whether you found the answer on the one-way issue.
I did. So there was a, the engineer at the time suggested that if the fence were put up, that a one-way alley be implemented, not a two-way, as it currently is. At the time, Manager Francis added that if a one-way alley was implemented, enforcement may be an issue, which seems logical, given how folks use it these days.
But signage could help.
Of course.
Direct traffic where it might be.
Of course.
More appealing to have it directed. I don't know if there is a direction, you know, one way or the other, but I sense that it might make sense to have people that were commercial patrons that were exiting through the alley to be filtered more towards Long Common, only because it is a major feeder into the rest of our downtown area ultimately.
If I may, just visualizing it in my head, if a person were to exit on Long, so say they couldn't find a parking spot, and now they're exiting towards Long Common, then the problem is they have a challenge of trying to get back into the parking lot if, if we have monument signage and what have you, and there's no parking on the side of the building, then they can't get back into the main parking lot.
They have to take a left.
They would have to take a left, and that can be challenging, whereas if they exited the parking lot and then made a right, and a right, and a right, then they could go back in off of Harlem Avenue.
There is a light, am I right? At Long Common there in Harlem? There is a light.
Right, so you'd have to make a left onto Harlem, and then a left back into the parking lot. Does that make sense?
It's a quick left.
Sorry, just a question on that. You said the recommendation was if the fence is installed.
The PCC's recommendation was to install a fence, keep the site plan as is.
No, that I've got.
I'm sorry.
On the one-way issue, I think you said the engineer at some point, or someone had suggested if, if the fence goes up, then it should be a one-way alley.
That is correct.
And one-way directing people towards Long Common, I presume, is the intent.
Presumably.
So that would mean?
That's different to, just if I'm, if I'm balancing, there are residents that live there too, right? There are residents on the Berkeley side that would like to see a decrease in traffic in the alley, but then we are directing all of it towards that one house with the picture that I was interested in.
I think there are two. The residents here accesses the alley, and the residents here, the two garages, would be the main one served.
But if you put up the fence and you made it one-way southbound, that means trash trucks and all the other service vehicles would have to access via Berkeley.
Yeah.
Right.
I'm not compelled that we gain much with a one-way solution there, just of all, I think there's a number of different ways, different ways they can go, but I'm not, I don't see the appeal of a one-way solution.
Yeah, and that's something that can be considered in the future, too, or, in fact, I would be hesitant to make that decision tonight without having information from engineers in public safety.
If I may, I'll just say, I hear your comments, and I, I too am a little bit troubled that the site plan was approved with the fence, and I don't see that there's necessarily a material change in circumstances that couldn't have been anticipated at the time that that was approved. So I'm sympathetic to the idea of the feeling of the bait and switch. It doesn't sit well with me. However, there was a PCC meeting, we've received emails, you guys are an engaged group of neighbors, and I appreciate that about you, and I appreciate that about a resident. So I do think that the people have had the chance to digest this a little bit. So from my view, as troubled as I am about the process here, it is a tight parking lot. The picture is misleading. It looks like it's spacious. It's not spacious there. It is difficult. This is a commercial area that we're trying to promote and support. I, I think I'm prepared to move forward without the fence. The alternative, and just my opinion and where I'm at at it, is if we do decide to stick with the site plan as approved and put up the fence, I'm not in favor of the improvements to the alley that were on the consent agenda. I just, I just don't think that that. I just, I just don't think that that, our dollars are tight, and it doesn't benefit enough.
Any other discussion? Would someone like to make a motion?
Well, there's somebody.
Well, we already had public comment, but I'll let you, no, go ahead. Go ahead, please, go ahead.
New Planning and Zoning Commissioner here. How common is it that they make a recommendation and then this body vetoes that?
The Planning and Zoning Commission is strictly advisory.
It's strictly advisory.
Strictly advisory.
So how, but that's my question, is how often do they make a recommendation that then this board does the opposite?
I would say that over, well, so I've been a trustee and now village president for 10 years. I would say 90% of the recommendations that come to us from Planning and Zoning are approved.
Yeah. So this is a 10 percenter.
Right.
Okay. Except a sample twice. Okay.
Recently, we've, yeah, yeah. Recently, on this property, we, yeah, it's happened twice in this area recently. But overall, that's why, so I think it's important to look at the big picture. It's rare for the board to overturn Planning and Zoning's recommendation, or any of our advisory commissions, for that matter.
Yeah, okay. Want to get the lay of the land?
Yep.
I guess, you know what, and I guess to her point, I'm not, I'm not sure that I've heard compelling arguments from the trustees as to why we should sort of go against a unanimous vote from Planning and Zoning. I mean, I, I mean, I'm just saying, I haven't heard anybody make a compelling argument for why we, we think we know more than Planning and Zoning.
I'll take a stab at it.
Okay, I mean.
I don't know how compelling it is, but, and I'll say, this is hard for me. I'm on both sides of this, for this whole conversation, right? And I could, I could see my way in both directions. I think it's interesting that there's not been a fence there before, right? That this is a, we're asking for something that is new and wasn't contemplated. It was contemplated in connection with this project, but this space has never experienced one before. And so this commercial area has always had that exposed alley that is exposed to Harlem into that, to Harlem into that district. I'm also, I'm happy with the outcome that the neighbor is able to obtain the six-foot fence. You know, I am sympathetic to the idea of lights shining in, and certainly this is an area that's increasing in traffic. For me, what we're talking about here, I have unending sympathy for the neighbors in this area, right? Just that, I can't say that enough, and I'll continue to say it. But the neighbors do have some nice fences there, and they're talking about improving those fences. And so to me, to add another section of small fence doesn't get much for the residents that they don't already get through their own fences. And so balancing the harms here, that's a tight parking lot with increased traffic. The ability to navigate in between those spaces is troublesome. The alley improves the traffic flow and I think makes it considerably safer.
But do you think that that's something that the Planning and Zoning didn't take into account?
I do, I do.
You don't think they took that into account?
I do think they took it into account.
Okay.
Their minutes are very comprehensive on this, and it's, it's a tight issue.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, I mean, I guess, I guess what I'm sitting here thinking is, we had Planning and Zoning consider this, consider it extensively. They also considered the planning initially, when it was approved, and initially thought that the fence was a major part of the planning. I gotta admit, I'm somebody who uses this parking lot a lot. That's where I get my nails done. Just a little shout-out to Q Nails there in the, in the, in that, in that shopping mall there. So I'm there a lot. I use it a lot. And I do share your concern from the standpoint of, at the last meeting, we also took a vote that went against what Planning and Zoning had recommended to us. And, you know, I know you said that this is, you know, this is a 10% thing, and I'm a very short-term board member, but I, at some point, I also have to consider as a trustee that we have these groups that volunteer to look into this and to make recommendations to us. And it feels to me that in the last two meetings, we've kind of been pretty dismissive of the work that this group has done. That's my personal feeling. I'm not saying that that's true of, I'm not saying anybody is being dismissive. I just feel like the board considered, the Planning and Zoning considered this issue. They've, they considered it when they made the recommendation to us for the initial plans. They considered it again with Dr. End there, with residents there, to make their comments, and they unanimously voted that the fence should remain in the plan. It gives me a really big pause to, to say that we need, that even after all of that and after all their consideration, we would go against it. Especially because I haven't heard an argument, I haven't heard an argument that has been, hey, this is why, this is something that Planning and Zoning didn't consider, didn't think about, didn't talk about, and that's the reason why we shouldn't do this, why we should go against what they're recommending.
So I will share with you the one data point that they didn't have that you all have in front of you, are the traffic counts.
Okay.
Because that was done in late May, and so we just received that information from the police department, were able to synthesize it and provide that additional data. So they did not have that particular piece.
Okay.
And so they didn't have the reference point of a residential that is within a residential district versus a residential that abuts a commercial district.
Okay. All right.
Also, the issue of the fence at 525 Berkeley.
Okay.
That issue's been resolved since the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Okay. And at that meeting, was that a big, I mean, would you, I mean, because I read the minutes. I read through the minutes. I didn't necessarily, was that a significant portion of the discussion?
I'm not sure how to quantify significant, but it was mentioned, and the, among the Planning and Zoning Commission's concerns was reducing nuisance behavior and the impacts of vehicles on neighboring properties to include vehicles headlights shining at them. To what extent you think, you know, it's an older fence that's going to be replaced probably with a more solid fence with fewer gaps in between with an additional foot of height that will reduce to some extent whatever vehicle headlights are visible to 525 Berkeley.
Okay. And I noticed that Chief Buckley walked back in. Can I put you on the spot, Chief Buckley, and ask you, Planner Siren had mentioned something about that the fence, there were maybe safety concerns with the fence maybe causing potential more problems for enforcement or nuisance in the alley?
I wish I had that perfect answer.
Right.
But we don't, until we see what happens with the fence.
Okay.
If it does get installed. Do we see an increase of crime as a result of it being put up, or a decrease? It could go either way.
Okay.
I will say that, you know, I did meet with, with Ann about it and talk a little bit about the fence, the pros and cons of having fences, because they do, people can hide behind them, do things behind the fences that you normally wouldn't see. So it could have an effect either way.
Okay. So you think it could?
So isn't that a great answer?
There could be, there could be an effect, both positive or negative, from a nuisance perspective.
Correct.
Correct. But, but it would probably change traffic flow as in, from the standpoint of, you can't exit, you wouldn't be able to exit that parking lot into the alley.
Correct.
Correct. Okay.
So a little bit of history about that area that they're speaking of. There used to be a cleaners there.
Yeah.
That had a drive-through.
Yep.
That would go out, exit into the alley.
Yep.
Until it got hit by a U-Haul truck.
Yes.
And then shortly thereafter, they closed the cleaners.
Okay. Sorry, it got, that's news to me. It got hit by a U-Haul truck because of the alley condition?
The overhang for the drive, no, 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 no. They pulled in, it was a low overhang, and they pulled in in the overhang.
Flipped the overhang.
Yeah.
Got it. So, I'm sorry, you're saying that this alley has historically been used for commercial traffic exiting this, this area?
Correct.
Trustee Evans, did you have something?
I'm ready to make a motion if possible.
Sure.
I'll make a motion to approve the major amendment to the approved site plan for 2710 South Harlem Avenue.
I will second that.
Motion by Trustee Evans, second by Trustee Galagos. Any further discussion on the motion?
Yeah, can I clarify? That would be, the motion is to, the motion would then be to say they do not have to put the fence up. Is that correct?
Correct.
That's what the property owner's asking for, that amendment to, to allow the fence not to be there. So, this is a motion, and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Not, Clerk Sol.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Koss.
No.
Trustee Galagos.
Aye.
Trustee Marchauska.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Motion's approved four to one. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is related to this similar, next-door property. I'm asking that that be tabled. It's a discussion regarding major amendment to the approved site plan for 2720, 2728 South Harlem, which is the strip center, commercial site, as opposed to the parking lot we were just talking about. I'm asking that that be tabled because we're working with the property owner on making gateway improvements, and I'd like to bring that all to you as a package.
Do you need a motion for a sort of date on this one?
Yes. When should we?
July 18.
Fine, I'll make a motion to table until July 18th, then.
Is there a second? A motion by Trustee Galagos, second by Trustee Marchauska. Any discussion on the motion? Clerk Sol.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Koss.
Aye.
Trustee Galagos.
Aye.
Trustee Marchauska.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
That is tabled to July 18th. D is an ordinance amending Title VIII, Section 862, and an ordinance amending Section 879 of the Village of Riverside Illinois Village Code. Finance Director.
Thank you, President Pollak. So last month, the village received notice from the Village of McCook that they would be increasing the village rate, which we purchased the water from McCook. So the rate is going to increase by 3.3%, which is equivalent to 0.19 cents for a cubic, for a unit, which is 1,000 gallons. So in front of you is an ordinance denied to increase the rate from, for cubic, excuse me, for 1,000 gallons, is equivalent to one unit from 19.44 cents to 20.77 cents, which is including the pass-through rate increase from McCook, and also the planned capital projects and scheduled lead service line replacements that are to happen for the village. For the sewer rate, they're also going to, to include the pass-through increase from McCook of the 3.30%. Let's see. So, excuse me. I just wanted to give you guys a little, like, success story of what the Water Sewer Fund accomplished with the Shenstone water main replacement. You can see before is how the street looked. The street projects are mirrored with the Water Sewer Fund. So any projects that we do, we want to do a resurfacing project in accordance with that. So Shenstone's reconstruction project, you can see how the street looked before. This is during construction and then afterwards. So there's about three small projects scheduled for this year, and next year, there is multiple projects that we need the funding for. Are there any questions?
Just, um, rate increases, just pass-through, right?
Yes, it's pass-through, but we do also have a scheduled increase for the lead service replacements. That's been a state mandate from 2022. If you remember previously, last year, there was a discussion that the board approved for a smoothing technique. So instead of like, just, you know, increasing the bill significantly in the year that we did do a lot of lead service line replacements, that we would do a smoothing technique. So it'd be a little increment each year.
Still unfunded state mandate, right?
That is correct.
Yes. Yes, and we had a meeting today with, yeah, we had a meeting today with the village engineer, and we were informed that the costs of these capital projects are increasing due to not the commodity of materials cost, but actually like labor or contractor cost. And he estimates that to be an extra 15% markup.
Wow.
Yeah. So we're trying to plan to get all of the projects done next year, and Director Tab, of course, can, can discuss that further in better detail than I can, but.
Just a question on the, so the water's going up by 3, 3.3% from McCook, so we're passing that through.
Yes.
If I'm following the materials, it says the Riverside water rate increase is 6.83.
Yes.
That's because of the?
Yes, the capital projects that are planned and the lead service line scheduled increment that we're going to do.
Got it.
So lead service line is every year is scheduled.
Got it. So but for the rate increase from McCook, it would have been about 3.5%, give or take.
Yeah.
But Riverside residents are going to experience 6.8%.
Yes, and then you can see in the breakdown, I tried to break it down, see, 2023, where your tax dollars are going, not your tax dollars, are where your water dollars are going to. So the rate in 2023 is 19.44, and you can see lead sewer was the little, is that yellow part up above? Personnel costs were blue, and capital expenditures were the black, and operating expenses were green. So you can see that's like the portion of what that expense is going for. And then the next year, you can see how the black is capital expenditures, how that's increasing a little bit more. So you can see just a little bit like where, where that increase is going.
Any other questions? So as always, I like to remind everyone that the water fund is an enterprise fund.
Yes.
Every dollar that resident or business pays for water stays in that fund and is spent for maintenance, operations, capital, and purchase of water.
Yes.
So it's unfortunate that it's going up, but it's not just us. It's happening everywhere because of the cost of buying water, and now with the state-mandated requirement to replace lead service lines. We have no choice but to pay for those. And so, you know, an enterprise fund is, it's, think of it as a co-op, at least I think of it as a co-op, where every resident is a part-owner of the water fund, and every owner, and as an owner of that system, you know, we have to spread the costs and pay for it. So, anyway, I always give that spiel.
Yeah, also, the village isn't in a position to subsidize at all.
Right.
So.
Right. It's, it's not lost on me that in one meeting, and I believe in the decisions we're about to make here, but in one meeting, we've increased the resident-experienced costs for electricity and for water. These are basic services. These are fundamentals. And so for families on the edge, right, or families without a lot of extra in their, in their budgets, this is impactful.
Yeah. I agree. Just add the caveat that with the electrical, they can opt out.
They can.
So.
But it does require them to receive the piece of mail, understand what's happening, mail it back in, right? That's.
Yeah. Point well taken, though. Anything else? Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
To approve. A motion by Trustee Evans, second by Trustee Galagos. Clerk Sol.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Koss.
Aye.
Trustee Galagos.
Aye.
Trustee Marchauska.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Motion's approved.
Thank you.
Trustee reports across community, I'm sorry, yeah, we need to go back. Thank you, Manager Francis. We need to go back to the Berkeley Alley contract that we pulled off the consent agenda, and that is a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a contract with Burke LLC for the purpose of providing designer-led design-build services for the reconstruction of the Berkeley Road Alley and the village's annual sidewalk replacement in the amount not to exceed $432,627. Do you want, have anything to add to that?
I do not, unless there are questions that the board has.
Any questions on that?
No.
Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make it.
Trustee Galagos, second.
Second.
Second, Trustee Marchauska. Roll call, please.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Koss.
Aye.
Trustee Galagos.
Aye.
Trustee Marchauska.
Aye.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Motion's approved. Um, and finally, trustee reports cross-community climate collaborative update. Assistant Manager Monroe.
Hi, good evening, uh, only two major updates for us, uh, I'll note that the Global Big Day celebration was held on May 11th, um, last month, it seemed to go very well, people enjoyed it, there was a good group of attendees for the bird walk and some other activities that were held with community partners, so thank you to everyone who came out and was interested in that, I, I learned some things through that process, I reported my own bird in my yard the other day, so, um, very easy. Uh, the other update will be, for C4, is related to our, the development of our Climate Action and Resilience Plan, uh, we're getting very close to, uh, finalizing an agreement with one of the, um, proposals submitted by a consultant, you'll hear more from them and more from me about the process as we finalize that, um, if everything goes well and they sign on, we can start later this month, and they will likely be here, uh, sometime later this summer to present kind of an overview of the process, any progress to date, and any other feedback or information that is needed from the board, so, um, we're, we're going along well, and thanks for your support on those projects.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments from trustees? Thank you, no action necessary, um, we have no need for the executive session tonight, so I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Can I ask you a question real quick?
Sure.
Of the sesquicentennial chairs, co-chairs?
All right.
Um, I didn't see anything on the minutes, from the last minutes, about the street signs, I, there has been a lot of interest about the selling of the street signs-
Good, you like that?
...that people are asking me about, and I'm just wondering if there was a resolution about how we're going to go about doing that, just because I've been getting a lot of questions about it.
Good question.
Anybody?
I can help. Yeah, so, stay tuned to social media.
Okay.
So, within the next, uh, few days, uh, we'll be getting out more information on that process.
Oh, exciting.
The village website's been updated to reflect that, so if you go Boards and Commissions, and then Sesquicentennial Committee, you'll see that information, um, but we're in the process of ordering the new street signs, so-
Okay.
-we are not at the point where we know where, uh, when those are going to arrive, and then how fast it will take to install the new signs without, within the village, depending on how fast that takes, um, when all the new signs are, um, installed, the committee will then be able to decide how they want to, when they want to list the old signs for sale. Those will be listed in an online auction-style format.
Auction-style?
Um, starting bid approximately $300, not finalized at this point yet, um, and they would be listed online, and you'd be able to, you know, just like any auction, would list those off. Uh, we will hold back certain signs, uh, very popular signs, uh, to, uh, auction off at, uh, various village events, uh, the Riverside roads and maybe a couple other streets as well, uh, but that's the process, it'll be an online auction.
Okay, just a note, some of the people who've been asking me about this are people who maybe are not on social media, maybe not good at online bidding, so if the committee could maybe consider the fact that some of our longtime residents might be interested in these signs, and so might need a little help getting on the, getting in the bidding process and stuff like that, but people are really excited about this, so this is going to be super fun.
Well, that's good news, we would put it in the landmark so they can, they can read about that in the papers if they don't have anything online, so we will publicize this very well, and-
It's going to be super fun.
Clerk Sol. The June and July newsletter, which residents are getting this month, so-
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Good, good, good. I just want to know which ones are the popular signs.
Yeah.
Yet to be determined as well, the committee will discuss it.
I guess we'll find out.
I'll determine that well enough.
The street that I grew up on, very popular, I'm just saying.
You should downplay it.
And, and nobody should win Olmsted Road.
Yeah.
Don't bother bidding. That's where I live.
Okay, so now I will make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Thank you, motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.